...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the people at 20:30.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the minutes with the clerk please call roll.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
K. R.?
Yes.
Go on.
Yes.
Next item will be approval of the statement of the bills paid in an amount of $257,704.44.
Mayor make a motion that we approve the statement of bills for $257,704.44 for 44 seconds.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the statement of the bills paid with the clerk please call roll.
Schreiber? Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
K. R.?
Yes.
Go on.
Yes.
Okay, before the public comments, I've got two proclamations to read for announcing Public Service Recognition Week and EMS Week. The first one will be, whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, and county and city levels, the unsung heroes do the work that keep our nation working. Whereas public employees take not only jobs but hopes, whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. Whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, train conductors, and astronauts, nurses, and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, and social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people as their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Therefore, I, John McTaggart, Mayor of the City of Edwardsville, Kansas, in recognition of these truths, do hereby proclaim the week of May the 13th through the 19th, 2018, as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Edwardsville, Kansas. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Okay, the next one. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses or injuries. And whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill gaps by providing important outpatient care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency technical medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, emergency nurses and physicians, as well as trained members of the public. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now, therefore, I, John McTaggart, Mayor of the City of Edwardsville, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim May 20 to 26, 2018, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Edwardsville.
Several members of the fire department, the EMTs, as well as Mr. Tony is our chief of the EMS. We appreciate them being here and thank you for coming.
Thank you. Okay. Next item will be request for comments on the public. Come to stand and name your name and address if you have a question.
Good evening, my name is Ed Sykes. I live at 44 South 98th Street in Edmondville. And I wanted to note that you're having a discussion this evening regarding collection services on the trash. And my comments were that two of my properties that I own have considerable frontages along Interstate 435. I was here when the negotiations were done a couple of years ago with Waste Management, which was death and law. And part and parcel to that agreement for a contract was that they would agree to lease up the trash along the interstate for a considerable distance from the highway up to I'm assuming, I don't really remember how far they're running over, there's a fixed number of yards up to the property lines beyond the highway right away. But in either of them, they haven't done it. They don't do it at all. If they've ever been there, they don't, I've never seen them. And I've personally made four phone calls to them over the last two years with not only no results, but no return phone calls. They don't pick it up. They don't prepare my calls to talk to combat about it. And if you go south of the river, you can see them regularly with crews along the highway. Shaw and he must have more pull than Edmondville has because they do a fairly good job over there. I do notice that this grass is coming up, so it's starting to hide a lot of the trash that's still laying there. But I don't know if that's their plan, I'll doubt till it gets grown over and kept seeing. But before I would want to see anybody consider further contracting with this company, I'd like to see them do what they agree to do in the circuit. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. There have been no other comments. Next item on the agenda will be your update on the Hyatt House in Billy Sound project.
Mayor, I'll give a quick introduction and then I will let Mr. Monson present himself and his guests. As you see in the agenda memo, and there's a slight adjustment to this, but one of the discussions we were having here in the last few weeks, as it related to the conference center and to the bonding, and as you know, we've had discussions about how the project, the public financing pieces of the project, and whether those bonds would be tax exempt, taxable, et cetera. And so, one of the ideas that had been approached was the use of what are known as qualified management agreements or qualified management contracts. And we were going to spend some time talking about those this evening, but I, as I understand talking to Mr. Monson earlier this evening, they don't believe that that's probably the best mechanism to go. But we still wanted to hear from them on some of the financial details that they just want to bring forward. And they've been looking at this, so I know I sent out to you all a couple of documents about how those particular agreements work. Basically, a city would own a facility, you would use bonds that were secured, for example, for trainees and guest taxes. You enter into a specialized agreement, that then makes the bonds tax exempt. The city is the owner of the facility. So that was a mechanism that we were exploring, but I think at this point, that's probably not a mechanism that will go forward. But enjoy the light reading that I provided to you if you want to know more about qualified management contracts or agreements. But otherwise, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Monson, and he can introduce his guest and bring us up to date. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff. John Monson, Compass 3, Minneapolis. And I'm happy to say that we've been working closely with staff, and we have hammered out planning zoning matters. We were in planning commission last week, and we'll be seeing that shortly. We are appreciative of the city considering the qualified management plan. Looking at pros and the cons, it probably creates more problems than it solves, one of which would be more risk to the city. So, do you agree with that?
I would agree, yes.
So, we'll take that back off the table. I'm glad that we had the opportunity to consider that. Appreciate CTA being willing to consider that. But I think, given the way, and I have a guest tonight, he was here earlier, Murray Cornberg, who's already funding, knows him way more than you want to know about this tonight, but he's available to answer any questions you have. And I expect he, along with Kevin Fitz from Paulsonelli, will get right on it with Tyler to get the development agreement modified. We'd like to do background on May 29th as originally scheduled, if we can get things together, which I think is going to be a pretty simple matter, given what the city has agreed works for you, and what Murray's latest run show works for us. If the city ends up getting another hotel, and the TGT and CID can become tax exempt, then there's no question. In the meantime, I think Murray's worked to blend a great with a couple of different length bonds, so that we can live with the taxable condition of the TGT and CID. So, I'm here for questions, as is Murray and, or what?
Does Murray have any, I mean, I don't know, Murray, if you have anything, just overall structure that you feel?
Sure.
I mean, I'm not trying, but I just wanted to give him the opportunity, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just, I guess.
No, I mean, I need to see who we're working with, and you saw it a month or so ago. But Murray, we're happy to do a basic layout, which is kind of back to where we were, only with rebooting of the TIF. So, that is extremely helpful. That is really what makes it work. And so, with that, and so Murray's available for questions. He can outline things in more detail than I have, if you're interested, so.
Let me just add one thing, because it's brought up, and as you know, so by rebooting the TIF, as it's been said, what we're, as you know, when we originally did this several years ago, we created a TIF district, and there was a TIF plan. And in the TIF plan, that kind of starts the base year, so it sets whatever taxes are in there, and in this case, it's the property tax and the sales tax. So whatever that value was, it set it. And it sets the 20-year term that we have to work under statute. What we have talked about in the past, and how to structure to do it, is to reset that TIF that then basically starts that date over. So there's really not been any collections or expenses around the TIF. So it would reset that date to whatever that date gets set, say October of 2018 or whatever the date ends up being, July or whatever. So that starts a new 20-year period. So, the two years that we've been in these discussions, they just kind of go away, kind of a no harm, no foul, I guess would be the best way to put that. And we start a new 20-year clock. That then gives the ability for those collections to be collected for a full 20 years versus 18 years. And there's always a startup period, so there's 18 months or so in any of these kind of projects where obviously it starts, but you're building buildings and things are getting started, and, you know, first year revenues aren't the same as second, third year revenues. So that's what we're talking about on the TIF briefly. And as you know, that's something we've talked about, being able to accomplish and relay that to the government team. That was something that could be accomplished, so.
My only, my question, I'm sorry, it's not to you, it's to our attorney Tyler, because I know at the last meeting, we had thrown out those options on how we were going to do that. Are we clear on all that now, Tyler?
Mayor, I don't know if we had extended discussions with the government team about that, but I think that we have an approach that we feel is, it may be aggressive, it may be pushing the envelope a bit, but we can make a straightforward argument in favor of our ability to do that with the Attorney General.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yes.
Sorry, I just want to clear that up, because like I said, I know we talked about that, about that option.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because everybody at the meeting was comfortable with that.
Sure.
Okay. And now, that's not to say we don't have a few points to gaggle over, but we don't want to negotiate here tonight.
Sure.
So, we'll be working with the staff. We have the framework of the existing development agreement, which change a few words or numbers here and there, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Do you agree?
I would agree.
Okay. So, I see no reason that the staff incurs that we can't be before you in a couple of weeks.
I was at the planning and zoning meeting, and I'll tell you, I was really glad to see the, how I perceived that the Planning and Zoning Commission took the staff working with the developer on addressing those issues. It sounded like all their questions were answered exactly like what they were looking for, and I think it really sounded good to hear those, everybody working together towards getting to the end. When will we see, have a copy of the modified development agreement?
If potentially, we could do that at our next meeting. Certainly, we're going to have to have some discussions. I think there's some calendar, you know, we're going to have to put together a new schedule to get some of the TIF restart. There are pieces of that that have to occur, and I don't think we can talk with that in two weeks, but, but, yeah.
Okay. And, you know, when you're, when we're out there talking to the public, you know, they don't know anything from a TIF to a TAP. What they're wanting to know is when is this thing getting built, you know? So what I would like to be able to say to them, and comfortably, is are we 30, 60, 90 days out from permit? Or where are we at? Would anybody kind of get an idea? What could, what could an answer be that we could give our?
Well, yeah, I mean, Tyler may want to say something on schedule. I think some of the construction pieces are not, I mean, from our side, as far as the preliminary private site plan are done, the zoning's done, there's still some easement documents that we've got to work on. I don't know where they're at relative to engineering and architecture and the details for review. I could say that once those are received, I mean, it's a fairly complicated building, but I wouldn't think it would take, and I'm going to probably give myself the impression 30 days from the time received to the time a permit could be issued, probably quicker than that, but.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said probably quicker. But I just, I'm not going to try to tell, you know, it's a pain reviewer, obviously, it's easy when you have a building that's one story with, you know, three rooms in it versus one that's multiple stories and fire systems. I don't even want to try to add, but we would push that through as quickly. And as we've done in the past, you know, we have issued permits, so things like grading or foundations, some of those things can happen concurrently or ever, you know, prior to the final physical building permit, but we just have not a chance to discuss any of that, but.
Are you going to rerun in for office?
Hey, but you can use that.
I can't, I can't sell anymore to people that it's the Edwardsville International Airport. I just haven't seen planes land in there either. But, I mean, 90 days, I mean, we would think that we should be pretty safe to say in 90 days. Is that Tyler?
I would say that you could probably see funding in 120 days because of the steps that we'll need to go through to reset the TIF. And we need to talk about that, but I would say.
I'm not holding it to you. But I mean, I'd just like to be able to say, you know, that we're looking at, you know, in the next four months.
Right. And that's not to say that, you know, certain steps can't start before funding occurs. I mean, I don't know what the circumstances are, but to get through redoing the TIF, to get at least 90, 100, 100 days.
So, Mr. Mayor, Council, one thing that I never want to do is overpromise. We have taken the last year for what we think is a good reason, because we are ratcheting up the level of quality for this project. And so, but to say, you know, to give you a 30, 60, 90 day date, and were you wondering, is that when construction would start, or?
Just when we can start, when people that are driving by can see more than what's going on there now.
Okay, so.
Barricades come down, and people start moving in there doing stuff.
Sure, sure. So as you heard Mr. Ellsworth say, we're 120 days a month.
Right.
I wish it were faster. It does take time, and if we don't have funding, I mean, we've put plenty of cash into it, but we typically don't start until the loan is closed, the equity is, you know, the loan cost is handled, and so there are title restrictions as to when, you know, mortgages have to be recorded and get first priority, so.
Yeah, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to find out the process for everything. I just want to know what we can feel comfortable telling people. And that's what, that's all, because that's what they want to know. They want to know, hey, where's this thing at? I've been asked a dozen times.
Sure.
And that, and that's, you have enough answers.
Fair question. Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Sykes, what I would say is that if you could look at a couple of benchmarks, number one, the approval from the council, as we can get that development agreement in front of you, that's a really good step. Number two, Doughty can go to market and place both the equity and the public finance gap. I think realistically, before we can get in there, and we have to look at, there's somewhat of a seasonality concern anywhere north of Texas. And so, we do want to have our structure up by the end of the year. Okay, but to do that, our foundation work needs to start end of summer. So, we have to, we will be, the first thing we do is go in there and do our excavation work. We have to do our subgrade foundation, there'll be some massive pure footings that have to go in down the bedrock. And so, those will be the first items the public will see, and if we can be doing that, I mean, 120 days is what, I mean, that's September. So, I think late summer, we'd like to be sooner. We have our architect working on the production, the construction drawings right now, and yet we just found out from Hyatt the other day, they said, well, we want a separate dedicated elevator to go to the rooftop restaurant. Well, thanks for telling us that. Now, when we had them bought in, but we are, we are wanting to increase the capacity of that upper floor restaurant as well, so that it's more of an attraction in and of itself, so that everybody can go up there and look out, see Illinois. So, anyway, that's the update, and without trying to be overly optimistic, but realistic, I'm thinking the end of summer, now given where we are. And yet, I'm encouraged by the progress that we've made, and, you know, this is a big deal, and we want to make sure it's going to happen correctly. So, that's my answer.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Mr. Chris Creek?
Thank you.
Murray's going to give that, if you don't ask her a question.
What's the answer?
Apparently not. Well, we're glad you're ready to get in.
Yeah, I did.
I don't know if you have a flight out for either of us staying, but weather may play a role here.
She's riding back with me.
Yeah, we had to be tortured one way halfway, so, thank you.
Very nice. Apparently we don't have any questions. John and Murray, thank you very much for coming by.
Oh, I was going to say, my thing is, and, you know, relative to construction, I mean, we have worked with that, yeah. Like you talk about the foundation, the piers, and sometimes it's a long lead time on these kind of projects, and we have in the past issued a separate permit for that. Now, obviously, you got to know what the building's going to be to do that, so it just kind of depends on how, but sometimes there's still drawings on, not so much the structure of the building, but how things are going to finish out in the buildings and things like that. And we've had contractors that want to move forward with that, and that is something that we have done and will be doing in the future as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on, and to add number five, consider motion to recess, or you don't need to recess?
I don't believe we need anything. Mr. Ellsworth will be leaving us for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number five, moving on to number six, is a recommendation on approval of the Planning Commission regarding special use permit for excavation material extraction, 9920 quadradride.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As already alluded to in the induction, this is for a special use permit in 9920 quadradride, special use 2018-04 and the equivalent resolution of 2018-09. On March 2nd, 2018, the applicant filed a concept plan for a special use permit related to approximately 9.6 acres of land at 9920 quadradride. The property is currently zoned commercial, it's a C2 property. It is vacant, and the proposed use of the property is for excavation material extraction purposes, essentially taking the topsoil and the dirt off the top for projects in the area. As part of this type of special use permit request, we ask the applicant also provide us with a concept plan after they've removed that topsoil and changed the topography to show how it could be developed potentially. What you need to know about this is not a commitment to that development. It is simply a conceptual, so that we can see how the grades are going to be left and how the properties need to be left for potential future use. So that's always important to us when we're doing this. Obviously, for the applicant, the importance is in the dirt. They have to own the property, the dirt gets used and sold for various projects, but again, they also will look at either selling or developing the land as future warrants in the marketplace. So we require that conceptual plan to be provided, and that plan was provided. It's a small cul-de-sac that shows basically four lots on that property that could be used potentially for commercial property, or commercial property in the future. On April 18th of 2018, the Planning Commission held their public hearing on this item. The staff and the applicant were the only people that spoke on the item in the public hearing, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the SUP with seven conditions recommended by staff. There were no protest petitions in regard to this item. The seven conditions are provided to you. I believe the copy of the draft resolution was in your packet tonight, and the seven resolutions are on pages two and three of that resolution. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those, reading them one by one, but I just want to highlight a few of them. The recommendation is that the length of the permit be for two years. Generally, what has been found with the first permit that they had at 10600, one year is such a short timeframe. Many times, this is a cyclical project with construction projects going on, so it's felt that two years was a better period of time for this particular use. Obviously, they'll have to meet all the licensing and permitting requirements of the city, as well as the state and other agencies in regard to this item. In fact, they do have to go through the land disturbance process and finally with the state thinks all those kinds of items have to be in order, as well as here at the local level. Condition three, we talked about the updated documentation that's needed. We just need to get a new K-32 driveway permit. That's something that goes through KDOT, with a construction type drive, a temporary drive, and then whatever the permanent, temporary solution is, the permanent solution again. Also ask your real estate agents, understanding what the access is of the state I go. There's also the KDH land disturbance permit. There's also the KDHE land disturbance permit that would need to be here. I believe that's done on an annual renewal basis, so we will have this year's and then next year as part of this two-year cycle, we still need that KDHE renewal permit. So, we'll be monitoring that. And then an updated stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is pretty commonplace. That's just to make sure, ensure that we don't have stormwater erosion occurring and coming onto the roadways and things like that. Item number four has to do local grading, the land disturbance permits, and the applicant will provide essentially these plans as part of that permitting process. There is an existing house on the site. I believe when you saw this permit a year, let's see, it's almost been a year and a half ago or so, when this came up before, there was discussion about the removal of that house on that property. Demolition permit was issued to remove that house. I believe they're in that process currently, so. Number six, only equipment and materials that are used regularly in support of the excavation material extraction will be stored on the site. None of that equipment or materials should be visible to the public. The plan right now is to keep a lot of vegetation, it's along K thirty-two anyway, so there's a buffer, visual buffer, that'll be there with the existing tree stands and things like that, so that should not be a problem. And then number seven was the hours of operation shall be from eight to five on Monday through Friday. So, those are the seven conditions that were recommended to you. With that, I think I'll close and answer any questions that you may have with me.
Did they appreciate any blasting?
No, they don't. If they were to encounter something where they need blasting, they have to go through blasting permits, and probably the SUP would have to come back through. Again, that's a pretty intense activity. Fire department would be involved in the review of the blasting permits and those kinds of things, just like they are. We don't, I don't think we've had any in the last few years, have we, chief, on blasting permits? We have had issues. We came close, yeah, I was going to say, we came close on the K, going under I seventy and.
Well, along, along up there, there was some sewer line, there was some, less than they anticipated.
Yeah.
There was some blasting from that.
But fire department's involved with blasting permit issues. We would probably, though, depending on what level of blasting, we're probably looking at bringing the SUP through or allow that.
During the environmental study, did they check the, do they check FEMA maps and things like that to make sure that if we get a torrential rain, that taking trees and things like that out, urban flood danger in properties?
Yeah, yeah. They should be throughout the whole process. One, erosion control helps keep anything on their property so that you don't get that dirt washing off onto other properties. That's important. As far as slopes and things, in the process of excavation, there's not any real slope, I'll say, slope requirements per se, other than to keep them as stable as possible while they're going through the process. But at the end of the day, they will have to meet slope requirements when they're done excavating, and those slopes are typical construction slopes. Usually, I believe they're usually a three-to-one, two-to-one, three-to-one kind of slope that'll be left in all of those ledge areas. That's to help with that runoff and keep those things stable, so. Now, if they come back and say they want to do retaining walls, that's a whole other function. That would be done through a building permit or a construction permit. But they do have a repl, I won't call it a repl, a replination plan, but it is a closure plan. So, if they remove this dirt and they've got it to the grades that they need it, they will have to revegetate all that soil, so it can't be left holding at the end of the day.
I would say that typically in the process, when you get a soil disturbance permit through the state, we do them as well. One of the things they look at is, you know, is in a like parian area, are there any known, you know, historical structures, things like that? So, the state has a checklist through those things. And if it is in one of those areas, then they require additional, additional work to be, to be done, you know? So, if they find that, you know, there's an historical thing there as part of that review, then they may require additional work to be done, traditional vegetation. Fairly sustained. Same thing when we do a road or sewer or water projects or anything like that, you submit the basic permit, and sometimes that triggers more. We know, in this case, we don't, we're in a strange way where we have to get a core engineers permit, we might do an additional, a bit more.
If this property's not in a floodplain, or if you might identify a special hazard area or anything like that.
No. I just, I didn't know what you had to add.
We're going to do these votes at the same time?
You could do it as a single, single motion, a motion to approve with the conditions and adopt the resolution as drafted, respond, authorizing mayor's sign of resolution. So, it can all be in one, one motion.
Superior, make the motion to adopt resolution twenty-eighteen, or twenty-eighteen dash oh nine, granting the issuance of a special use permit for excavation material, extra, extra, I've got mayor problems here. Anyway, subject, however, to the conditions here and aftermore fully expressed in the resolution.
Now, does that, does that oh nine include oh four?
Yes. Because you're addressing, you're addressing the special use permit case number two.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
I'm not going to read.
Please, no.
No, I'm not going to. I'm just going to say, in mid-motion, a second to conclude the recommendation for two thousand and eighteen dash zero nine, and please call roll if there are no further questions.
Schreger?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
K R?
Yes.
Good, you got to do that.
Mayor, yes.
Sorry. Next item on the agenda, we hear a presentation regarding organized collection services for commercial businesses in the city of Edwardsville.
Mayor, member of council, what I'm going to do tonight is kind of update everyone on where we're at in this process and the preface and put pivotal context to the conversation. So, what we're doing tonight is not necessarily a initiative driven by the city or by waste management. So, what was included in the original contract that was signed in February of two thousand and sixteen was a provision that we would discuss this item on or around January of two thousand and eighteen to, for waste management. At the time, Deppenball had become the exclusive commercial provider of solid waste services. In order for us to get to this point, there are certain state mandated steps that we needed to satisfy, and I'm just going to run through those real quick. Like I said, in February two thousand and sixteen, the city entered into a contract with Deppenball, now known as Waste Management, to provide residential solid waste services that includes curbside recycling. As part of that, it included a provision that we discussed adding commercial services in two thousand and eighteen. In order to do that, the state process that needed to be satisfied, the reason that process is there is largely to make sure that in communities where there are multiple solid waste haulers, that other haulers aren't displaced by a city choosing one or the other to provide sole service. And so, that's why the process is, it's so long and there's so many prescribed steps that the communities need to enter into to make sure that all the other potential haulers in the community aren't adversely affected. Now, in our case, it really only got the two solid waste haulers, and one operates on a much larger scale than the other. So, this process wasn't really to, you know, we didn't have a whole lot of other service providers to displace. We were rather, I mean, we just had to satisfy this process as the state law requires it. So, in March of two thousand and sixteen, we adopted a resolution announcing the city's intent to consider this plan. In October of two thousand and sixteen, we conducted a public hearing, and the group approved the plan, which included in the packet that outlined some of the goals that we would like to see accomplished through adding a sole provider of commercial services. And then in November fourteenth of two thousand and sixteen, we formally established commercial service as a municipally provided service. Now, that doesn't mean that it's a, we were in a position to implement said service, and in fact, there was an eighteen-month prescribed waiting period between that action and today before we could take any action on it. But what it does is establish that this is something that the city considers in its best interest, and if we're, if we're able to accomplish the goals that are outlined in your agenda memo. So, essentially, what we're here to do tonight is just to announce here at the end of that period, we're not necessarily recommending an action one way or the other, but just to provide you an update on, here's where we're at, and to get a general consensus on if the council wants to move in one direction or the other. I've invited John Blessing, who's the government relations manager over at Waste Management, who is essentially our point person over at that agency. So, I'll invite him up to provide a little bit more context on to their current levels of commercial service, provide some of that information in your packet, so if you've got additional questions coming out of that or other service levels, he may himself available for questions. So, like I said, it's not really an item for, we're asking for a motion one way or the other, but just to provide you, you know, here's where we're at now. If we decided to pursue this option, there are still several other kind of nuances that we would need to figure out before we finalize an agreement, and that would all come back before council, whenever that's ready, including rates that you all have set and amended contract terms and change of that nature. So, if you've got questions at this point, I'll open up to them, and if not, I'll turn it over to, to Mr. Blessing.
Well, I might just, I mean, just a quick summary to say this is, in Edwardsville and a lot of communities, we have a franchise agreement for the residential services. And in order to be able to do that on the commercial side is the reason we had to go through this process. We didn't have to do it on the residential side because we were already doing this. And several years ago, there were some changes in state statute that said basically, if you don't have an organized collection service, as they refer to it, then you have to go through this process. We had one for recycle, or for, for solid waste collections. They effectively said, well, if you add recycling, but it's still residential, that's not a change, but if you ever want to add commercial services under that, to where you would say, we have an exclusive hauler, that hauler provides all of your service, you can have different haulers for commercial versus residential. In order to have any of that type of system in place, we had to go through this. So, really, that's, the purpose of it was fundamentally so we could have that organized service that whole round today.
And I should also add, too, we've got some clarification that if for whatever, so this process all in all is about twenty-six months from beginning to end, but since we've done all that, if for whatever reason the council decides not to pursue this as a, as an option at this time, we've already satisfied the state process. So, if down the line we run into, you know, reengage in these discussions, it doesn't restart that two-year clock. We can kind of, we've done all the late work to get to this point, so that's one of the reasons why we did all those steps before tonight, so we didn't have to be in a position where we really wanted to do it, but we're two years off because of the state process. So, if I've got no questions on, from today, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bless.
Well, I don't have much else to say. Your city staff did a great job putting together some information in, in your packet. Really, this is a neutral point for, for waste management. I think in the packet it states, you know, there's about seventy-seven commercial businesses in the city of Edwardsville currently with individual contracts, waste management, previously Deppenball, services about sixty-two of them. So, we already got the lion's share of the commercial business in Edwardsville, who provides them great service. We believe that if we continue to do that, they would be our customers indefinitely. Gaining the remaining fifteen customers is a nice advantage, but then all of a sudden we, we risk the entire portfolio every three to five years when that contractor come up and play. So, again, I just want to make clear that, you know, this is going to be a neutral point for us. We're just here because we understand that there are benefits to the city for having a commercial franchise, you know, reducing the number of trucks on your streets, having some level of control over your commercial businesses to make sure that they do have, you know, trash, or if you want to institute recycling, you know, you can control what's happening in your city a lot better with a commercial franchise. That being the intent of staff, you know, we're your partner, so we're here to support whatever option that the council moves forward in. A couple of other things, just kind of to recap, we had a really nice meeting with the solid waste district council for Wyandotte County that we hosted about a week, a week and a half ago, and they talked about recycling, and I was telling your mayor here earlier, Bonner Springs in Kansas, Kansas is looking at rolling out a pilot to have recycling and trash carts, and I'm always using Edwardsville as my example in Wyandotte County, someone that has already kind of done it and done it very well. Some of the information in your packet shows you the trash tonnage collections, and you can see in two thousand and sixteen, the tonnage went down considerably, the trash tonnage, that is, and that was the year that you instituted recycling. So, that's, that's a feel-good point there that lets you know that more people are recycling and diverting that out of your trash. And even if you look at the two thousand and seventeen numbers, it's still well below what the two thousand and fifteen number for your trash tonnage was. So, that's, that tells you that your residents are doing the right thing. If you look at the, the recycling tonnage there that staff has broken out for the year of two thousand and seventeen, it's up about twenty-one percent over sixteen. So, again, your residents are moving in the right direction, and they are, they're continuing to recover it, which is a good thing, and that also reduces your level of trash. That's really all that I had. Worked closely with staff on any service issues. I'm happy to say that we don't have many in the city of Edwardsville, so that's always good, but if there's any other questions that you may have, certainly address us.
Mike, refresh my memory, when we talked about this, were all the businesses sent some type of notice or some type of information regarding this? Didn't we?
I know there was a number of notifications, but I, I'm going to defer, I don't know if.
So, we, we did conduct a public hearing in the October range, so we, we, there wasn't any specific outreach to the businesses, it was the mandated process for a public notice hearing, and we did, like postings and, and online outreach and things like that. We also had the same, we, when we were, prior to consideration of the solid waste plan that was approved by council, we did reach out and got some input from Waste Management. We reached out to the other firm in town and never got a response providing input into the plan. But there hasn't been a, a very vocalized call on the part of commercial notices that are, that are demanding a change one way or the other. That would probably be done in the lead-up to, if council gave direction to pursue this as, as something that we wanted to consider, then that, that targeted outreach would definitely be a part of that because it would have effects one way or the other on their rates and frequency.
I, I, I just thought, Chuck, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I thought it was conversation or comment you made back when we talked about this a year or so ago, that we need to be open with our businesses.
Sure.
Just say, hey, we're talking about, it was just information, but.
I know we put it out there in different ways.
Exactly, it wasn't there when you do this, I thought it was just information.
I think one of the questions that always comes up in, in, in these types of situations, and this is probably the biggest policy decision. So, I would say in the Kansas City area, region, the, the concept of more of an open system is probably more common, that is, if you look at Lenexa as probably that example. You, you know, individual homeowners associations or individual customer, both at the residential and the commercial level, say, I'm going to go pick this company, this company, or this company. Those companies set their rates for, those people, however they decide to set their rates. And what the city does is they basically license the haulers, and they charge a license and fee. The other mechanism, which is more what we do, and there are, there are other cities in the region, is we provide it through a franchise. So, basically, we go out for requests for proposals, solid waste companies, so we would like to have, we'd like to be the exclusive provider, whether it's residential, residential, commercial, however you want to do it. You could pick one or more, I mean, bigger cities oftentimes will break it up. And in that case, what happens is they charge a rate that's set basically through the council process, and then there's a franchise fee, and so they pay the city a franchise fee for the use of the streets. So, those are the, so those are kind of the two models. The benefits, well, you know, one of the benefits, obviously, is when you have it in a franchise agreement, you know who you're dealing with in the sense that you have a firm, and you have, if they're not performing, you can say, you're not performing, and you can terminate a contract and go out for another. You do have some ability to regulate the rates in the sense of how the rate, the rate mix is. You know, it's not uncommon, and I mean, again, I know this is a policy issue, that sometimes your commercial rates will help offset your residential rates. That's not an uncommon thing. You know, you wouldn't want to get so skewed that it was so heavily influenced on your commercial base than your residential. But it's not somewhat unlike how taxes work, right? I mean, so, you know, businesses, I think, are sending, pay a higher percent of the appraised value or the assessed value than residential. So it follows that same concept. What we're doing here isn't trying to set that, it's just simply, we now can say, we want a single provider or we want more than one providers. We can have a separate commercial from residential. Based on our size, it probably doesn't make sense. Financially, it probably wouldn't make sense. You'd probably pay higher rates. Everybody would probably hit higher rates if you tried to use more than one company. I mean, we did reach out, I just don't remember all of the pieces that we did there. You know, I, most of the places I've worked in, we've been more franchised agreement basis than what I'd call the open haul. Oftentimes, your roll-off containers are the ones, or compacters. Sometimes roll-offs are included, compacters are what you basically see in a commercial area, where they're a large compactor. Oftentimes, those are not set under the franchise agreement. I don't know if there's a specific reason why, but they're not. And again, part of the reason, you know, that we talk about how many business licenses we have versus companies, well, you have places such as Closet West, well, they, there may be an association that's paying for the garbage there, but you may have six, you may have six or eight tenants in four buildings and one property manager. So it's going to show up on their books as one customer, but our books for business licenses might be six. So that's a little bit of a difference there. I think the only other thing that's different today than two years ago, and you might look to address this, there has been in this market quite a bit of consolidation of haulers, such as Waste Management, Wyandotte, Daffenbach, I think Republic, Waste Corporation of America, I'm not sure the names of. So there, quite honestly, there's fewer options in the solid waste collection business today than there was. I don't, are you familiar enough with that?
Sure.
To kind of address that?
Yeah.
I mean, there's still some small, I recall the Bumpy Roads is kind of a small, is a small hauler in the region, but you don't see many of those.
In the Kansas City metropolitan area, there's three major haulers, Waste Management, Republic, and WCA, which is Waste Corporation of America. WCA purchased Town and Country, if you're familiar with that company prior. They were, you know, a big competitor of Daffenbach. And Republic purchased Superior Disposal, which was also based out of Over Park, I think. So to staff's point, there are a couple smaller haulers still out there, but there's, the majority of the work in the Kansas City metropolitan area is now handled by one of the three major haulers.
Are you looking for?
I don't know that there's anything we're looking for, though I'm not going to, I'm not going to let it get off this easy, so.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just sitting here waiting.
I do think, John, we need to address, and I know we have addressed, this trash collection along the highways. You know, we've asked for details of how often they're going to be out there. I think there's certainly was a clear indication maybe in the contract that there would be a more active collection of trash handling redways. So I'm not trying to throw you a ride in the fire, but it's coming either way.
Yeah, it was coming either way, and I was just going to say, it really bothers me that we sat here and listened to your presentation and that you sat right there and listened to a man give his concerns and that you don't, that you don't address it. It's not big enough or a concern of yours. Apparently you live in Johnson County, you're not near 435 where this trash is at. I've called a lot about the trash, and I know that Mike Webb has called and asked for a performance timeframe when you guys have been out there and was told at first, well, we don't do that, we don't keep track of them. Bull, that's a lie. Everybody keeps track of their employees and what they're doing on a day-to-day basis. And then I understand that we get a, we get something.
We got received one today.
One today?
No, we've received one today for probably the month of, no, we received it.
No, today.
Oh, today, no, it's basically the month of February.
No, I'm saying that we have received one today.
Yes, yes, yes.
Received one.
They covered five days.
So, and then, so in two years or how many, we've had trash picked up five times?
Well, I can't figure how many. As far as what we've received as a report, we've gotten one report that covered the period of February of 2018.
And how many?
I believe there was five dates on that.
I wouldn't vote for you guys to have our trash service, and I'm really looking forward to the time that we have to look at renewing our residential service. Because I think if we sat here and we talked about being a partner and how we trust each other going forward, past experiences show exactly what kind of partners that we're dealing with. So, go ahead.
No, just to go over that report, prior to 2018, we weren't keeping track of our collections in Edwardsville on an official tabulation, but per staff's request, we began to do so. Were no collections in January, and just weather permitting, right? So to date, about five collections encompassing about 30 employees and over 181 hours of labor. So in that, I believe the request earlier was kind of where and when, right? So the river to the end of this Edwardsville city line, like by 70 close, you know, close to that. That's the section of the 435 that we were looking at. So outside of the residential contract, we did issue a letter of intent to the city of Edwardsville that mentioned that we would, you know, do our best to monitor our contribution to that litter. And I believe we've done that. As far as, you know, any other references to, I know the city of Shawnee was brought up, and I hear Johnson County quite a bit, looks can be deceiving, right? So we do not have any kind of agreement with the city of Shawnee to collect litter on the highway. The landfill is in the city of Shawnee, the landfill that Waste Management owns. Part of that landfill agreement has a section in there, as every landfill agreement that I believe Waste Management has, that we have to monitor litter that escapes from the landfill. And it's just so happened that the most visible part of that is the landfill that butts up against 435. So believe it or not, we actually monitor litter and collect litter on the backside. There's like volleyball courts and baseball courts on the backside of that Johnson Drive and over there where the landfill is. But people only really see, you know, the highway. So part of the agreement for the landfill in the city of Shawnee required us to monitor litter that escapes from the landfill because it's windy and it's not always covered, you know, trash can blow out there. So that's our obligation there. There were, you know, I don't manage the landfill, so I don't have that contract, but I can certainly, you know, get in touch with people to do. And what charges are encompassed in there, I know that they are in there, but I don't know specifics as far as what that goes. So if you want further information on that landfill contract, we can certainly look into that as well.
I think it would be helpful, instead of a landfill contract that doesn't really affect us, that if we could look at neighboring cities that are similar to ours, maybe Lenexa, and what their schedule is for how often the trash is picked up out there, it might be more beneficial to us.
So other than the city of Shawnee's landfill contract, the city of Edwardsville's letter of intent is the only piece of litter collection coverage that we have in the state of Kansas, Missouri.
Could you reread the actual time expenditure and so forth that you did?
Sure, sure.
And this is for what period, John?
From, we started in 2018, but in the month of January, there was no collection.
So you didn't place March and April, because I don't think we have anything for March.
Correct, correct. We have, we did not have any collections in April. We have three in February.
Because April was too cold?
Pardon?
That's what you said for January.
Correct.
So April was too cold?
No.
Oh. No trash.
I'm sorry?
There's no trash.
I'm, I'm, probably.
Yeah, there's a lot.
And then in March, so yeah, there were five, four, and that was encompassing 30 employees and 181 hours spent on the side of the highway. And that's just in Edwardsville.
Okay. I think you may want to look at the production and the efficiency of your employees. About two months ago, I decided to stop complaining about it and do something about it. So I gathered up two of my grandchildren, grade school age, my wife and my son-in-law, and we covered about six, five to six acres on the east side of 435, south of Swarts, down, and we chose that because we could get away from the highway a little bit for the younger kids. We were there two hours and we, and it's still noticeable exactly where we were. They're starting to filter some plastic bags and so forth in there now. But we were there two hours with two, with three adults and two kids, and I can't remember if 18, 20 bags of trash that we collected. So your, our Waste Management's getting ripped off if that is the claimed allocation and the time spent. Because ours is still noticeably different than any other part of the highway.
And how long ago was that?
We did it, I believe, in middle of March.
Well, something clearly has changed. I grew up where that gentleman spoke, in his house, because that's my dad. And we were there when 435 got built. And there was, there's trash pickup that for the, up until the last six, eight years, it seems like, maybe five years, we would see the white pickup truck with the yellow light on top and four or five guys out picking up trash regularly from up around Kansas Avenue north to I-70. And we don't, we don't, we don't see them. I mean, we haven't seen them, well, clearly for five days, you know? I don't know. But something has changed to where that's not a priority anymore, or a concern anymore, or something. And just like he said, the, now the grass is growing up and it's going to be out of sight, out of mind.
Until the mower.
Until the mower comes there, and then they turn those 10,000 pieces into two and a half million pieces. And I don't know, I, it, we've talked about this multiple times, and I mean, I commend the councilman Adams for taking that initiative to do, go out there and do that. Maybe we, maybe we task our police department with writing Waste Management tickets when we see them losing trash out of the back, spilling the load on the highway, if I remember that organs correctly.
We've already made those efforts.
And if that doesn't start helping, you know, making a difference, then maybe we go, you know, maybe we start needing to get a hold of highway patrol to come out and monitor and help out, and maybe they're already doing that, I don't, you know? But something is, it's not working with, you know, it's kind of foolish to keep asking and expect a different outcome.
I will also say that, and I'm sorry, I don't have the report tonight, but KDOT did also provide us a report. Now, KDOT's focus predominantly is on large items on the highway, right? So tires, fenders, things that have fallen off of trucks, they yell, they yell focus on what I would call the small or, you know, the trash type thing. But they, they do put, and I can't remember, but quite a few hours, we've had a change in the, in the regional engineer, area engineer, but they, they've been, I will say, one thing interesting about that is actually the KDOT regions change at the bridge, but the entire bridge actually is with the Johnson County District. And at the north end of the bridge going forward is with the Bonner of Edwardsville and this regional district. And so, and they do do, they have some sweep days where they use the whole area engineer. So it's not just Bonner, Edwardsville, but it's however many areas that are on in the KDOT regions to come out.
Good.
I would say from our experience picking up trash, that the big bags that you see in the, some of the styrofoam is probably Daffenbach or Waste Management. That's probably where it came from. Those are the items I see floating off more than anything else. But in all honesty, the first 50 feet, there's people throwing crap out of their car. It's quick-trip cups, it's gloves, it's shoes, it's all that type of thing, and I doubt very seriously that it comes off a Daffenbach truck. But I would probably attribute, attribute most of the plastic, larger plastic bags and the, and the more industrial type of plastic would probably fall in the Daffenbach. The most irritating thing to pick up is styrofoam. That is by far the most irritating. It disintegrates very rapidly, and it turns into those really pieces very fast. So in your defense, right along the edge of the highway, probably not much trouble lots, everybody dumping cigarettes and paraphernalia and car parts and right there.
Well, we encourage the efforts of local law enforcement, not to say not, to have a different opinion, we don't believe we're the significant contributor. We're going to admit our trash trucks are going to drop trash, right? I mean, we're not going to deny that. It's the uncovered loads and pickup trucks, it's, you know, those types of things. With the landfill right here, with discounted drops at the landfill for everybody that lives in Wyandotte County, unfortunately, there's a stream of pedestrian traffic, not pedestrian traffic, of residential traffic to the landfill. So the number one way that we believe, you know, you can crack down on some of that is exactly what the councilman suggested, and that is stepping up the tickets. I don't know if you don't just target us, but if we're, if we're violating that, then rightfully so. But please, keep your eyes open for all of those that travel down the road with the pickup trucks and things in the back with metal and things that fly off.
I can appreciate that, what you're saying, and I understand that. But those people didn't sit in here two years ago and say that we're going to pick up your trash along the highway. You did.
So to be clear, there is no contractual obligation on our behalf. We submitted a letter of intent that we would do our best to monitor the litter we attributed, and I believe that we're doing so. Just to be quite honest, no trash hauler is in the litter collection business. But we, you know, understand the proximity to the landfill and that it was a, you know, a real sticking point for the council at that time and still is, and so wanted to make our best efforts to contribute to litter collection. KDOT, its department of jurisdiction, is in charge of litter on the highway. They are the number one entity that should be monitoring and collecting litter on the highway. We actually have to submit and schedule in advance with KDOT anytime we want to send a crew out. We can't just send them out, or else KDOT will pick us, because you can't just dump a truck on the highway, right? Get out and start picking up trash. So we have to submit those things and get approval from KDOT, let them know what we're doing.
We really stopped her asking for picking up trash.
We got a lot of, oh, high hopes.
Really? I would imagine so. I would imagine.
John, here's, and I don't need to, so here's, I think, what I would summarize from my standpoint from our program.
Sure.
I think you'll need to really double down on your efforts here. I don't believe five times in almost four, over four months is making a good faith effort at collection. I mean, if, the last thing I got, I think the last time was March one or two. So not doing any in the last, however many days out here, you know, 45 or better days, I don't think we would consider that good faith effort. I don't disagree that there's more than just one source there. Some of that source is probably from the landfill and from blowing southerly winds to the north. I would disagree. And what I've read in that report, probably have not ever gotten north of K-32. I mean, if you have, I don't know, I'm just going by the report that's been presented. So I think what we want kind of to be sent back and understand, you're the spokesperson and so you're, you're sent to the, to the lion's den a little bit, but I think what we need to impress upon those people and the management... what we need to impress upon those people at the management level at waste management is that the level of service that they have been providing in that area isn't sufficient. Now, we expect they're going to be out there every day, eight hours a day, I don't think that would be reasonable either. And failure to do so is likely not to bode well in future, in, in any type of future contract agreement, I mean, honestly, so I just.
Or with neighboring cities who people have contact with and talk too long.
So I just think, I mean, it's an important issue, as has been said, it's been mentioned, from the time we did this contract, and it's been brought up on numerous times, we internally are also trying to do some things, since you heard police were, were trying, you know, trying to do that, some of that litter blows, you know, from the highway onto the nearby streets, and some of it is just locally, you know, people unfortunately litter, but I think what we're looking for is some partnership there to help us achieve that. The highway is the front door of our community, one of them, and we also know it's a trash city, so we appreciate all the help that you can provide us.
I don't need to take all night on this, I just had two questions in relation to that. And one was, we've had a few people call and had no response as far as customer service goes. Can you tell us, is that just the standard, or is there maybe another number, better way to get customer service or response to that issue?
Yeah, if, and maybe this is a side conversation for staff, maybe that needs to go through staff and then to me, because like I said, I mean, waste management doesn't handle litter, right? So if you were to call into the call center, they're not going to have any idea what you're talking about as far as that goes. So maybe that's, we could work on an avenue of that kind of communication if, if there's something that's noticed. When the crews are available, if I can direct them to a spot, I mean, that would help, and certainly rather than, kind of like you were saying, they just go out there and eyeball where they want to start, but if there's a, an area of importance or, or immediate need that we can direct them to that, that's, that's, that would certainly work.
So the best way would be for Mike to contact you, and then you would be responsive to him?
And just to give a little more context to that, so we do encourage our folks to, if they're, if they've got consistent issue or, or whatever, not get through to customer service, to contact us. We're able to kind of, you know, we've got a direct line to their, the route supervisor, John, and in cases where, we don't get, as far as City Hall goes, get too many calls related to litter pickup, we'll get calls about, you know, large item, bulky item. Every once in a while, we'll go to call about a, a missed pickup, and there we'll give that to us, we, we've got a direct line to John and his crews, and that's usually, that's usually handled within twenty-four hours, so I'll take that.
Zach, I'm a little bit confused, because, I mean, how would my dad know that he's not supposed to call that number?
I'm not saying he's not supposed to call.
Because he didn't get anybody, and I know he called four times, and they said, we'll call you back in an hour or bit. I called three times, because I called Mike Webb one day and said, hey, I called and left a message, and no one's ever called me back. So how are we, I'm on the council, and I didn't know there was another avenue.
Well, and the prescribed avenue, and the way things are supposed to work, how I'm going to speak on conference, is that if you're correct, the folks call customer service, and your folks receive customer service in some kind of response through that avenue. When those channels fail, correctly, we would, we don't want our staff taking up time regulating the service level, the contractor service level that we have.
Right.
So I don't want to give the impression that, you know, that's something we put out there, but it's, you know, if people have consistent issues, and that mostly happens to do with missed pickups or whatever reason, that we'll tell people, if this happens again, call us, and that way they know it's a problem area as far as.
And I think that compiles the, the optics of it, too. You, you see the trash that's not getting picked up, and then you call, and then somebody says, I'll, I'll call you back, we'll look into it, we'll get back with you, and then they don't even do that. So it's just like a big, yeah, you know what, really, who cares? That's what it looks like.
It sounds to me like, though, I'm listening to all of this, is that there, the, the number that really needs to be called should be.
Fox four?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Quite. Would, would have, would be to call Zach, because I can, I can see where a customer service for a large company gets a lot of calls from individuals, they're not going to respond to. But, but from, from the city, chances are they're, they're going to get a response.
Sure.
Because Zach will not do the call.
That's through the contract.
And because it sounds to me like your calls have gone to somebody that doesn't know what to do with it. I'm not trying to defend us, but that's what it sounds to me like.
And if there is, if there is an ongoing issue with the service level, and I mean, that's been communicated to John, and I don't want us, our staff, to become the call center for, for waste management.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I just wanted to put that out there. Yeah.
Well, and I, I do think there's two things here. There is, the, most of the calls that we get are more for, either I had a missed pickup, which I, you know, oftentimes I didn't get out early enough, or maybe, you know, but, but missed pickups is one, or, you know, had, put my trash out, and I put my can up there, and I stepped, sent the tires aside, and they didn't pick the tires out. You know, we get probably, I think, more of those types of calls. Now, relative to calls of trash or litter control, that's kind of a different area. So, you know, generally, I think when people call and they had a, just a missed pickup or something like that, that interaction's pretty good. Sometimes they will call here, Zach or the staff can call the, the route supervisor who can go by and say, hey, look, you know, this isn't part of your normal pickup, we can do it, but there's a fee, or here's another option. Litter, litter control on the highway is kind of a, a very important issue, but a separate issue, which I don't know that we get residential input into that, where people call and say, I drove down the highway, and I look, do I get people saying, man, I drive down the white highway, it looks horrible with all this trash out there, isn't anybody going to pick it up? Yes. But I don't know that they'll call in waste management and say, there's trash on the highway, please go pick it up.
Well, it sounds like when they are, the customer service didn't, doesn't know about our, our agreement. That brings me to the next thing, and I think it might be helpful, is a, a great source of disappointment or aggravation is unmet expectations. And so I feel like when we have a letter of intent that doesn't really spell anything out, then we have expectations here, and you have expectations here, they're not meeting up. Would it be possible, just maybe for you to tell us, what, what should we expect? Should we expect somebody out there on a monthly basis? Is that reasonable? What level of debris on the side of the highway is a reasonable expectation? I just feel like if we're all on the same page, and we have a mark that we can hit, then we're all, then we can check that off and know that you're doing your part, and then there's not the frustration on, on our side.
Sure. And the number of times that we can get the crew out in those areas, I will ask, because I, I don't manage that crew, and find out what level of expectation we can, again, as far as that goes, and I can respond back to that.
I will say, when we were going through the contract, and I'm sure, I mean, there was some reluctance to be overly specific. I, I mean, I think we wanted it in the contract as a contract provision, specifically that thou shall do the X, waste management, if, you know, was not willing to commit to that, and this letter of intent was somewhat of a middle row, but I think it has done exactly what you're saying is, but it, it set an expectation that what we feel should be done isn't being met, and somebody else may be reading that saying, well, we came up there five times over the last five months, that should be sufficient. Hopefully not, I, I don't think it is personally, but.
Well, the moni, it says monitor, monitor. Well, heck, I can monitor how, you know, how many mosquitoes are biting me, but until I put some mosquito spray on me, I don't do anything about it.
Right.
You know, I can monitor and set a monitor all day, so I totally agree, we need, and you know, I don't know when our residential trash pickup contract's up, and you know when?
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty?
December, the current contract.
But, but I would say, in my opinion, on this commercial stuff, unless there's a, a new letter or a new, an agreement in place on our trash, that I, I would support this whatsoever, and would, would talk to other cities that I, anyway.
Yeah. Probably a good place to put a pin in tonight, in this particular item for this, for tonight's agenda, is that the consensus I'm getting is to, or at this point, the general opinion of the council is to not pursue a commercial, organized commercial service agreement with the current contracted vendor at this time, but to monitor service levels of some of the things that have been talked about tonight is on the record, John's taking notes about, and then we revisit the issue when the contract is up, if we're getting twenty-twenty.
Unless there's something, something's got to change. Right, 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 right.
Well, two things, my, my standpoint, two things. One is, I was never in favor of this, because I really want to be a business-friendly city. And you know, if they're, if they're cousin homes, a, a trash pickup company, they need to have the ability to hire their cousin. And so I'm really much more in favor of having the businesses make the choice, freedom of business. I want Edwardsville to be a place where people say, I like doing business there, and, you know, this may be one of the reasons to do that. The other thing is, I do think it'd be worth stating that ditches in towns and so forth around are the responsibility of the landowners. So often, we put off, and we say, gosh, we got trash all over the place, how come somebody didn't pick it up? Your property is your responsibility, and this is a little different issue, but I hear complaints about it in town, too, and those ditches that are associating with your property are your responsibility. And I, and, and it wouldn't hurt for some of us to have some civic goodwill, maybe a good neighbor, who pick up their trash that's out in their, their ditch and show some neighbor, neighborly love and, and warmth and, and community, in the community. So I, I don't want to dump it all, I think there's some responsibility there, but after picking up the trash, we need to fine those beings. The second they throw something out the window, we need to nail it and put the maximum fine on it, because that's our city they're disrespecting, and they need to realize, when they come to Edwardsville, we're proud of our city, and it's not someplace to dump your quick-trip cups and your, and your McDonald's bags, that this is a town that feels proud of themselves, and we won't put up with it.
I agree with you a hundred percent, and everybody else does, that's kind of in the same conversation we've had on ongoing code enforcement as well, so it's just a matter of, hey, try your community and help keep it clean.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we consider authorizing an acquisition of sixteen-inch Kubota Z-700 Series mower for Public Works Department here on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next and the last item before you tonight is purchase of a new mower for the Public Works Department and jointly the Parks Department as well. This was an item that was budgeted in 2018, added to the Public Works budget, we budgeted nine thousand dollars for the purchase of a new sixteen-zero-turn mower to help with mowing our parks and our railways and such. You know, after looking into it a little bit further, I kind of realized that this is kind of under Mike Webb's threshold for budgeting, so maybe it will be done before the council, but it's on the agenda, so I'm going to discuss it a little bit. So if there's any questions, we do have two other mowers that we actually utilize at this time. We have a 2013 Grasshopper mower, it's a fifty-two inch, and we also have a seventy-two inch John Deere, which was purchased a couple of years ago. The Grasshopper is pretty much on his last leg, it, it's still operating, so the intent is that this new mower actually will be housed at the Public Works facility, Public Works cranks will be used in yet-to-do facilities and such, and, and helping out at the parks with, with this new mower. And then we'll be stepping it in for rotation once the Grasshopper dies. This purchase is actually through the HGAC discount buy, but Houston-Edmonton Area Council, which is a nationwide government procurement agency, so we have really good pricing for this, this equipment. We're also recommending that we buy the two-year extended warranty. One of our, one of our issues here in Public Works is, is the limited staff and the maintenance, and given the small equipment, the other two mowers and the mule that we had this spring has been very difficult for our guys to keep up just the maintenance, because we don't have a part-time, hard-time mechanic. You know, we currently have a position open, we're still trying to solicit to fill that position at that, in that area. But this Kubota tractor, we'll be purchasing to Coleman, which is right down the road, and they'll be able to help us with our maintenance tanks, so that's why we're actually recommending to purchase the extended warranty, which includes four years. So, 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 if anyone has any questions.
I was just wondering, on the maintenance, do they come to you to maintain it, or do you have to bring it out to their facility?
No, we, we have to take it to the facility, so our crews, currently the mowers are down to park, and the crew, the guys are down to park, and then they load it up on a trailer, and then they take it to our facility, and then they try to fix it, and then we take it out to Garden Hour, we take it to our lake mower, we take it up north, so there's a lot of time spent, you know, just in, in maintenance. We certainly do things in-house, but we can, the guys can, you know, change the blades and sharpen them, and do everything that they can in-house, but once we pass that point, we can wait for home, back and forth. Unfortunately, the John Deere has had some issues over the last couple of years, it's still under warranty, but yeah, we're working through that, so it's been shot higher six times. Hopefully we have all that resolved, but it's not considering.
Is your, is it a peaceful, this Kubota?
No, sir. It's not. It's the S-10.
Is this going to be put into use immediately?
Yes, as soon, as soon, as soon as we buy it.
Wait, it's, it's onsite?
Coleman actually had one three weeks ago, no, I mean, we don't have it currently, but Coleman had one three weeks ago, and I called them last week, or sent an email these days, sold that one, but it shouldn't take them very much time to get it, so we can get it right down the road, and hopefully within next week or two, they'll be available.
Technically, what happens is, it's just like when we go off the track, and we talk to the book, so we, so the contracts were Kubota USA, and so we put the purchase order through them, and then they select, or they have local deal of contracts, of course, in this case, it's, it's Coleman, so we'll actually send the, I think the check actually goes to Kubota USA, which I think is in, in Texas, and then they say to Coleman, yes, this, you know, it's approved, we've signed off on the contract, and we get it. These being pretty much readily available, we should be fairly sure through the time.
I assume it was going to be quick, so we didn't have to go a pretty long time.
Yeah, it won't be months and months, it might be a couple of weeks.
So do we need a motion? Or we don't need a motion on this stuff?
Well, I would go ahead, I mean, tech, I, I didn't even think about it, technically, when we have things, you know, under ten thousand, because they don't, between, and because it's under the Mark HGAC contract, it technically has been bid, but I didn't even pay, I just, I thought, oh yeah, we need to put this on the agenda, and then I went, oh, we could have probably got by with that. I would go ahead just for the purposes of us, like, a motion if you have one.
Make a motion, we authorize the city, I'm just saying, manager to enter into an agreement for the purchase of the Kubota tractor as stated on the purchase sheet for ninety-four-hundred-seventeen dollars and thirty cents.
Second. I'm moving second it to approve the acquisition of a sixty-inch Kubota D-700 Series mower with the additional two-year warranty, freight, delivery, and everything, so for the amount of nine thousand four hundred seventeen thirty for that twelve-page cover roll.
Sure.
Yes.
And this KR?
Yes.
A lot? Yes.
I, I guess the last thing we get, do the Grasshopper probably go up on like purple label or something here for a little while?
You know, we're actually going to work with the Parks Department, they're getting another staff member, I believe, within the next couple of weeks, and school's out, this is to keep utilizing it as long as we can.
But yeah, we'll probably sell it at some point.
Okay. Here's your report.
A few things here, it followed, I believe that at our last meeting, there was a question about an area where there's some driveways and some illegal dumping. It, it was KDOT, it's actually part of KDOT's right-of-way, but, but basically, just like we, they say you're responsible down, you know, you're responsible to the edges of street. We did go up there and pick up some of the, of the items that were there as a purpose, but technically it's a property owner, but we did pick up, I think there's some carpets, some other minor things that we tried to work with and that, but we just, we did follow up on that one. Reminder that our next meeting will actually be on Tuesday the twenty-ninth, because Monday the twenty-eighth is Memorial Day, and City Hall will be closed on that day. We do have, and if you want to, and I, we did put in, as I, as I reminded you, a, we put in a project under the MARK STP, which is Surface Transportation Program, for a project to basically rebuild a portion of one hundred and tenth street in Riverview in the intersection there. We have been having discussions with the developer of the piece in Bonner Springs to contribute to that, that's how we put the proposal in, we're kind of under some, some timeframes. You can go to the MARK website. You can go to the MARK website and look at all the programs that have been submitted, and if you would like to submit a, a, "Hey, this is a great project," and give a little public comment to those things, that is still open. We expect the first round of scoring to be done here in the near future.
How, tell, tell, tell the rule, tell them.
If you go to, it's M A R C dot org, and then I believe it's under transportation, and then it says SDP projects, I think is how I recall it. And it lists, you can see every project that's been done. Surprise, surprise, there's $12 million, roughly $13 million a year, so there's $26 million, $2.5 million I think comes off the top for public transportation, that didn't used to get funded through the airbus a few years ago. Those came out, and in the last round, they used $13 million and got down to $12, two or three, because the feds have cut the funding, you never know when it's going to be that far out. But I think there was probably 60 to 80 million on the Kansas side, if I remember right, something like that. So typically, there's about 3 to 1, 4 to 1, so for every dollar that's available to be awarded, we'll give $4 worth of applications. We do expect, just from talking with some of our other partners here in Windup County, that we would expect support from them. They obviously have their own projects as well that they've submitted, but this does kind of have a multi-jurisdiction use to it, because River View is, you know, a road that will or serve across the entire southern side of this road. Of course, 110th Street connects K32, I70, and then on into the 117th, et cetera. So we're trying to take advantage of that. So we expect scoring in the near future, maybe maybe this week or next week, the initial scores. Likely, we will score at about the midway point, maybe below, but probably the midway point, because it's a good project, that's how it always is, but then you have cities that's been in projects, or we have typically three or four. And then the scores all get rearranged sometime in probably fall, September, July to September, we'll, we'll have an idea of whether there's an award. And then, of course, for in the year 2021 and 2022, I think this is called for services. So we have, we have time, but that's just the way the process goes.
So what kind of improvement were you looking for on that?
Uh, we, we, we put it in as a four-lane road section, that's in keeping with our process. At the intersection, at least as we funded it, we show it as a large traffic circle, not a roundabout, but that could be signalized. Part of it happens, what happens, the concern is, how many signals do you end up from I-70, you know, Village South Parkway, River View, potentially?
Will that reconfigure the entrance to Village South?
It won't reconfigure the entrance to Village South, no. But that entrance is scheduled for, or at least, that's part of the things we got to do within the concrete. So to have that, that intersection will have to be signalized. And if you look at the traffic study that was done, again, relatively for Bomber Springs and the number of vehicles that will come out of the acreage there, that's called the Compass Center project, it's a large number of, you know, a large number of vehicles, in the thousands, right? So they'll have to be traffic controlled, depending on how some of that develops, might trigger changes in it. This is probably the more expensive option, but again, having five traffic lights or four traffic lights in a, you know, less than a mile corridor creates all kinds of other problems, because especially if you have ten trucks, and you stop one, and then the traffic is stopping another. So this is what's proposed, again, these things do tend to add some changes as they go through from schematic, which is where we're at, to final design, and it becomes a KOD project, so that has a whole level of stuff to it. All right. The last thing, which I'm, I'm very unhappy about, but this is, this is life of Jessica, who, as you know, technically serves as executive assistant back there, but does all of our permittings and collections and all of that, has accepted another position in another locality. If you want to know the issues without getting into personnel, it's pretty simple, workloads and dollars. I mean, and, I mean, it is an issue, I, I know.
She felt like we were paying her too much?
Exactly.
We were giving her enough.
We, we, we were, we were giving her enough.
They never crashed.
We were paying her too much. It is an excellent, I will say, it's an excellent opportunity for her. I won't mention where she's going publicly, but I, you know, it's, it's a good opportunity for her and the family, so I, I can't correct anybody. It's just now, I'm putting Mark on the lawn mower, and I think you're doing permits, and I don't, I don't know, but.
At call center, for what's happening?
Yeah, at call center. But we are, so we are actively pursuing that, we have made it very clear that it's, it's out there, we will fill it. When I find the right candidate, it will be filled. So we won't be going through a multi-month process to fill it. When the right candidate hits, and we have some people already expressed interest, then we will fill it and move on. So she, you know, she'll still be here in town, she's, she's going to be here for Saturday's cleanup day, I know. She's going to continue to help us some in the evening hours, to kind of help to keep us on, on board officially. She, this Friday will be their last official day from a full-time capacity. That's all I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, yeah, a couple items, like mentioned, citywide cleanups this Saturday, we'll start at eight, and then we'll, officially, the event ends at one, we'll probably fill the bins up before then. I've sent notice to a couple of you, let me know if you can make it or not. Cemetery will have a special Memorial Day service the Sunday before Memorial Day, beginning at two o'clock. And in the last note, I'll just kick out, we're at 1,000 likes on our Facebook page, which is pretty decent for a PR site. Y'all know that.
No, and I think, I would add that at our next council meeting, we will have an HIRB application, I believe that we published for.
We posted, actually.
We refer to it as Project Magic, I think y'all know what it is, but it's a new facility within Mid-Grand Office, Mark, going to be approximately 60,000 per year, and they have an international basis of their company. They currently have a small operation in our city, so you've probably seen their equipment, free visibility, and guide them with their equipment.
Chief, please.
On some of the similar notes, we have one leaving for the Secret Service, we have one graduating in June, so we're interviewing this Thursday, we're always in the process, so this is kind of what we do. We don't have eligibility list, we've already exhausted, a little bit too much time's gone by, so we just, we have the applications and have tested, we're testing them somewhat as they come in, it's fairly easy for us, and we'll start our interviews on Thursday, hope to have to fill pretty quickly. Once the officer graduates in June, again, another 14 months before they're ready, so it's pretty.
14 weeks.
I'm sorry, 14 months, 14 weeks.
Four weeks.
So that's amazing. So number five, two projects, we'll finish it up, we'll wrap it up, our law enforcement training here, so a lot of things have been going on, and as far as, not to belabor the issue on the trash, but we, we, we immediately reached out to the Highway Patrol, they have a couple of divisions, they have the motor carrier inspectors, and they have the local Highway Patrol troopers, and the regional captain, as, they, they have specific assignments in which they have been in that corridor where there's convergence of apparatus, as I put it, of a number of things, hauling things. It's not just trash trucks, but it could also be that truck, that 1,500, you know, Chevy truck being overweight and not secure loads and those sorts of things. So they sent us a report a few weeks ago, I provided that to Mr. Webb, and we're not expecting to have another one of those for a few more weeks, but they have, they have projects specifically assigned to our area in the K32 Woodin Road, 435 corridor right in there. And they are, with, with our concerns, they've heightened their awareness to look at some of those kinds of things, loose loads as well. We mainly are focused, though we've done an effort out there on the 435, that's not typically our focus, we like our visibility right here in the main, in the main corridor, we know that works, one of the best ambassadors you have out there. And one of the things that we've looked at is, if there's bags of trash or something, we try to investigate who might have left it there, we're in good communications with Public Works to try to get those things just cleaned up, but we can't be everywhere at once, so it's good that people call and say, "Hey, there's been a dump here," that sort of thing. But we try to, try to be looking out for that, and try to focus, if we can find them, we charge, we have done so. So we've, we've gone as far as finding someone who purchased something at Nebraska Furniture Mart, and found out what mow home they lived in, and then made the charge, and made them go clean it up as well. So, so we've done some, some things such as that. So it's a pretty good partnership. As soon as we have a new report, I'll provide it to Mr. Webb, and then he can provide that CC test.
If we see someone littering, can we just report their license plate?
Oh, sure, you can, if you have a description. Absolutely, we encourage it, tell everybody else, and we'll be on the lookout, for sure. We can certainly track their, hopefully, the proper license plate, we can track back where their address is, and we can strike by them, and maybe get a citation issued, so.
Thank you. Chief, finish.
I wish I had a good news story. I found out about five minutes before the meet, I've got one that's leaving for open bar fire on the 29th of May. One of our fire, our mess, and I've got three that are in the KCK hiring process. This is an odd meet for us, we've sat here for three years, and we've done pretty well, not losing anybody, so we're kind of at that point now, we're looking very aggressively, we're out looking at our bar timers, and ultimate aprons as well, getting ready to start a big hiring announcement, to sit there and start a little building, with the anticipation that nobody else goes out the door, but if I have to, I've got a list established. On that side, the bad news gets worse, we were denied the multimillion-dollar PSCBA grant for regional grant process. Nobody in the area, from all the regional grants I've talked to, nobody, my contacts on either one of the two coasts with regional grants, got approved this year. Regional grants just did not go over real well, because there's been some other issues on it. On the high side, though, the grant, the small grant freeze that's turning up here has still not been denied, so that's going through the table process, so there may be some sunshine on the clouds outside, but that's all I have at this point in time. Captain Van Bever leaves next week for, gives up two week assignment in National Fire Academy, Commissioner Barrow, we leave, Captain Van Bever coming back.
And we're going to reapply on that regional grant in that one.
That is a good chance.
We have a little bit of time, right, so.
Kind of on the same time, we still have a wastewater former position open, we had a couple of really good applicants that applied, interviewed, however, before they got their second interview, they don't pick up positions that were likely for all of their skills abandoned. So if you know anyone who's, you know, looking for a wastewater position, we still have one, they're being advertised, looking for someone that has a, you know, the skill set and can't have the skill set. So it's been open maybe about six weeks, just to keep you informed. Otherwise, we've been really busy in Public Works, Phil, the operation guys, we're out hacking puddles today. Hopefully, within a next week and a half, we're going to get on that big right-of-way mower and start right-of-way mowing. Unfortunately, again, with only two guys, they seem to have taken three vacations within the last six weeks. So you can only do so much with one man working a day. So like I said, once the other gentleman gets back, make sure you get on that right-of-way mower and start doing that work. And code enforcement, just a little brief update, today we have about 56 open cases, seven on a watch list, those include eight cases that are currently in court, we have closed and, we see compliance on 80 cases so far this year. And we have a gentleman that has reported numerous ones downtown, and just so you know, he's reported about 30 of those cases, so those are only open and closed statuses, so we're actually looking as well.
Dave?
I was looking on the Mid-America Regional Council website.
Yes.
It's not easy to find.
Okay, we'll send you a link. Link said you have a link.
Okay, send the links, because it's not, it's not easy to find.
Can you send it to, so that we can forward it?
Yeah, we send it the link in an email.
Right, and that way we can forward the email on to others.
Absolutely.
So it doesn't have anything else.
Right, it will be a link, we'll just say, "Contact for a grant."
Got it.
And we'll, we'll give you the link all the way to our project.
Right, that's what we want.
If you want to see the other projects with there.
No, we don't want to look at the other projects. I think we've sifted through the.
Yeah, I don't remember how many there ever is, I don't remember how many.
I just, I just want to thank EMS department for their service, and appreciate the recognition with that, because it's duly earned. Thank you very much. Don't let those guys go before Saturday.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know if you are, he's already planning on being there Saturday, because Zach put out that there's pizza involved, he's prepared. Zach, pizza, pizza. Bring the doughnuts, so we get the police department.
Let's see, they're going to make pizza and doughnuts, right? That's typically the rate they do. I would eat if there's none. There's a little bit of lunch, pop.
That's all I, thank you.
Carol? I don't have much, just when we're talking about the intersection and things coming up, I, well, it affects the whole city, but in just keeping in mind just limiting signals, just, you know, nobody wants those red lights on your way to the highway between, in the, in I-70s, so if we can, when we're, when we're making plans, or finding the timing in, in some neighboring cities, they have it to where when you hit a green light, you just go, you know, you wait once. Some, some cities haven't figured that out yet, but hopefully, if we have most lights, we can get that going.
And that is part of a program that actually is managed through Mid-America Regional Council called Operation Rainy Light. And so cities do have to participate in that, I mean, there's a chart, but what it does is it looks to the timing issues, et cetera. Our camera, our, our existing lights are all, with the exception of the K32 Ford, we're using the camera technology, so it senses the vehicle. But it has its shortcomings too, because when you get a really bright day, or a lot of snow on them, or things like that, sometimes they don't.
Yeah, ninety-eight of wood.
It just sees white, and if it can't see contrast, then it has problems, but there's no perfect technology. But yes, that is something.
Less light, the better, but anything to make it not, make less, we got a question.
The, I'm understanding the, the public is asking me questions about that Village South also, and we can safely say that we could probably see construction up there by the end of summer, is that, did I understand that right?
That's what he, I, I mean, I, I think you're probably looking at a fall time for, in late summer, early fall, I think it's a reasonable time.
Because there are a lot of people I know that they all get the same questions, when's something going to happen up there, you know? And you just have to keep saying, "Well, we're in negotiation," and that, you can't really say a lot, but you'd like to be able to say something, you know, about, if you could say, "In the summer," you know, "Early fall" or something, I guess it would be safe to say that.
We'll be putting together, and, and we'll be putting together a kind of a new schedule, because we're going to have to re-engage our, our, our people a little bit, but I think with the direction we're now.
I realize you've got to be kind of careful what you're really saying.
Right, but, but I, I, we'll put together some new schedule, and again, there's, there's several things that were outstanding now are finished, and that is that, you know, the site plans and those kind of things. There's still a little bit of planning stuff, but that kind of planning is, for the most part, should be settled unless somebody changes everything, which I'm not aware of.
One other thing I wanted to say is that I know that there's just been a ton of effort by you and all surrounding you on this project, and, and everybody, and that does not go unnoticed, and I know that it's driven you about half insane, but you, I think, you've done just a bang-up job on that, and I personally just appreciate the heck out of what you've done on that, and you've made it easier for me, you know, to see this process. And the other thing is, you can order six less doughnuts and two pizzas less, because I'm going to miss my first dumpster day since I can't remember when.
We'll find another opportunity for you.
I can do something to help a little bit later on.
On site for 435.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm sorry, but I want to draw a line on that.
You know, I, I will say this, if, if. You know, I, I will say this, if, if, you know, as we look at things like whether we want to include commercial contract into our contract, I mean, one of the things I would say to a company is, you know, by having a franchise agreement, you're picking up this, this business, whether that's fifteen percent or twenty-five percent, so what should we be expecting in return? For example, is, so do we say, well, we want to have once a year pickup, you know, bulky pickup at the home, like some communities do? I, I mean, so I think there are, there are opportunities to use the contract process to benefit the community in that sense, to say, hey, if you want to, that's, that's what, I mean, you know, Shawnee, I mean, that, if you want to be a hauler in their community, one of the things you have to do is agree to that pickup. They don't care what hauler you are, you got to do that. That's part of their process, or tree, you know, tree disposals or things like that. And I think there's some things going forward in future contracts that we look at that as, as negotiating for us.
We have like a two-week tidy town around Shawnee.
Right, and they broke it into three separate weekends, but that's a requirement, to be a hauler in the community.
So another, I guess, one other thing, do we still have a chipper?
We have one.
Yeah, does it operate?
No, admittedly. And it's really just for small, it's not for big loads.
We did buy one about twenty-five or thirty years ago.
So the same one.
That's the one.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
It's like two inches smaller, I knew kind of stuff.
It wouldn't, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to start thinking about investing in one and bringing it down here, because there's a lot of brush to come down there.
Well, you know, we have done some of that in the past, I mean, brought it all up. I would just, I know we don't want to go home, but I'll give you the story of the one you don't want to have, but you know, we, I serve on our kind of insurance board, and a city out west let everybody bring their storm debris and pile it up, and then the city decided to burn the storm debris. And so they burned it all, and it was in a parking lot, and then, you know, the doctors put out, put dirt on it, and the next day, the neighbors picked up, and now they have a two-million-dollar claim, because they burned up everything for you, you know, farm equipment, the cows, to, to implement dealers, you know, it got out, got out of control.
I didn't say fire.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just saying, it's, we turned in there like, this sounds like a really good idea.
They think they have liability.
Yeah, the good thing is, because they're covering, and they're, are, kind of the way, we're the same one, torque points, and we were required to pay five hundred thousand, but they probably have a multi-million dollar claim on them, I mean, but can't handle how it's handled, though. Sorry, deciding liability, we always think about it.
Margaret?
Just to follow up, I know we've talked about trash all night long, and I, you probably don't even want to hear. One comment to follow up on, if we were to go and have all of our commercial businesses go with waste management, I, I would think a stipulation would be every other Saturday you after on four thirty-five, to clean up that mess.
Yeah.
Take it or leave it. I do agree with Chuck, we have businesses here, what, fifteen, sixteen, if they have something, if they pay a cheaper rate, let them.
Right.
I do agree, I agree both ways. And I think that was your comment you made a year or two ago, how we force them to do something.
Right.
And one other thing that I didn't want to get into the conversation, so KDOT, are they responsible for picking up trash? I know you said big items, but what?
Exactly, it is, I mean, he's correct, it is their rights of way, they are responsible.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
You know, we had a big race here.
Right.
And how many hundreds of thousands of people drove through, what, Trash Airworthville?
Right.
KDOT, could we call them up?
Yeah.
And we have, we have, okay. Enough said.
And they're, and they're aware of it, and like I said, they, they actually, they actually have a very detailed report. They can tell you what truck went to what spot on what day, so.
They do, too.
Yeah. They, so, but, but they did say to me, hey, they do a couple of times a year where they will focus on an area, where maybe after the race or something, maybe that's what they do, but.
I will say, I don't think I cared for the comment about, you, we were the only ones that had this letter of intent.
Yeah.
I thought that was a little bit of a jab. Sorry.
We may be.
Maybe I took it the wrong way, that we're being too needy, but just a comment. I don't hear comments, but that's, that's just, I don't know, I just, I sensed that. One more thing, a couple of the neighbors were asking, which I'm hopefully preventing this, hazardous waste, no way, no how. Does U G have something?
Yes.
And when is that?
Same weekend.
So it is this weekend?
And every third Saturday of the month, I think it's October.
Right. And it's over on eighty-eighth Street.
Is it on the, oh, okay.
Right over there where the, where the wastewater plants at, they have a facility there you can take.
I will still.
You know, paint and all those kind of, paint your bad rush and stuff.
Okay. So you won't have to turn away. I will not be there Saturday, but I will bring donuts.
And that's what, and that is what we typically.
It's my, one of my first ones, I have such neat items at my house that I haven't. I do. I am the most beautiful trellis that I've ever used, about dumpster day, I guess.
We, if we do direct them over there, if they come and they have that kind of stuff.
Perfect, okay.
We'll try to have some little maps of how they can get there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. On the right-of-way mower, you can clearly tell where you guys have done it, and it looks, I mean, now that the.
They chart it out, I mean, you can tell a little.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it, it looks like it's going to be exactly what we all thought, or at least I thought it should do. Get somebody on there that's, gets used to it, knows how to run it, and gets comfortable with it, and I know that takes time, but they'll, I think that everything will straighten up. Chuck, you brought, well, Carol, too, because I've seen it there on River View, how it looks, it looks, it looks nice, I think. It'll make a big difference. That trash deal, I ain't going to say anything more, you know, it's, is what it is. But they worded things, they, they, the letter was written, the way it was written, for a reason, that they would monitor it, they didn't want to be pinned, pinned down, they knew that this would be coming one day, probably, and, hey, we were, we're doing what our letter said, we're monitoring it, and they, that's why they don't want to have that being pinned down, you know, contractually, so. But anyway, maybe we just need to be a little more forceful the next go around and make sure that we barter, and just like a development agreement, you know, kind of get something out of it, make sure we're getting. I'm looking forward to seeing the development agreement, and I think there were some things that we had talked about in a couple of those meetings about things as a city, maybe a civic contribution.
And we have that in the existing one, and there is one in there to do, and we've been working on a community foundation, which would be the mechanism in which the money could get collected through, and then it could be used for, that it could be used for, you know, brought, purchased, purchased. But they, the existing agreement really has two pieces in there. One was contributions to offset some of the costs related to the sewer with the lift station, which we can offset them those costs. And then the second one was a contribution to our community foundation, I believe, one year after the start of the agreement, if I remember right. And so that language is there, and we would include and keep that language in there. It was a very sizable amount, so.
Yep.
We would assess that further.
Well, I have distinct privilege of being able to make comments like both our chiefs does about somebody leaking. At the end of the month, Mr. Duckers is retiring, and we're in the process of trying to find a replacement. Dave, I want to thank you for all the years you've served.
Appreciate the opportunity. Nine years.
Yes.
Nine years. And I think everybody on the council, I don't know if Mr. Locke was here when I started or not, the first night.
I don't think.
But the first night, Mr. Mayor appointed me, I was sitting in the back, and three citizens got up and were adamantly opposed to my appointment, because I was a corrupt pit old boy. And it was.
Been there.
I almost went home. Well, I hope that no one's accused of being that in my last nine years.
Absolutely not.
But I, I would state this, I think that the three people that you're losing, the mayor's going to appoint with council approvals, another lawyer, but you're losing three good people, especially Jessica. She's really top-notch. And I think it's, and it's hard to fill police, it's hard to fill fire, and I think like they say, they're always, they're all looking for other jobs, higher-paying jobs, and you get them trained, especially in the police, you spend months and months and months, you train them, and then they double. That's going to be a problem you have to deal with. I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor, it's been great. The mayor did tell me, he said, you don't have an opinion, you just answer questions and give legal advice in my, but it's hard, because I was on a number of boards myself, and I like to vote on some of this stuff, but I can't vote. I keep my mouth shut when I'm asking questions, but it's time, I'm, I'll be, I'm seventy-one,[1780.12]